Okay, we're gonna call to order a special meeting of the Rochester City Council of May 11th. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Here.
Bavacqua.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Keithley.
Here.
Peterson. Sage.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Okay, so I think now we're looking for a motion to go into closed session with the and that we will return.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we go into closed session.
Motion by Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilmember Albrecht. Support. Support by Mayor Pro Tem. Is that you, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson's absent. Sage.
Yes.
And Salvia.
Yes.
Yes, so now we are going, we are going into closed session, so wait a minute for TV to go off. Joelle, and welcome. Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of May 11th, 2020. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Here.
Bavacqua.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Keithley.
Here.
Peterson. Sage.
Here.
Salvia, and I see is connecting right now, so we count her as present.
Okay, yeah, Councilmember Peterson is, oh, there she is, all right. All right, now we're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to liberty, and justice, for all.
We probably could really use it just having a flag up there, I think, but anyway. Okay, now we're on to public comments. Scheduled public comments, which I don't think we have any. So on to number five, is approval of a minutes, the April 27th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Salvia, said?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. First is a recommendation of professional engineering services for water systems reports. And B is the adoption of city emergency operations support plan.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as it stands.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion.
Uh, yes, I'd like to pull A.
Okay.
And I, I do have a lot of questions on B. I, I don't know why both were on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So.
So are we voting on just B? Uh, Ms., Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
The motion was made.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on to a recommendation for professional engineering services for water systems report, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I, you know what, I, reading through the contract, I just had a few questions, so I, I just would have liked us to have done this differently. So the lump sum, uh, fifty-two thousand. How much, because then it just goes into say how much, it doesn't go to say how much is going to be actually paid monthly. In terms of the full contract of being paid, so if it's a lump sum, is it being paid now? And also, um, it goes into the disclaimer regarding neither party will be responsible or liable for delays caused by persons, events, or circumstances for which the party is employees, blah, blah, blah. So, uh, my question is, like, how long till this project is going to be completed? First and foremost, the timeframe.
Uh, Sandy, go ahead.
The first two reports that are mentioned in there are due to Eagle by December 31st of this year. So they would like to get started on them because the amount of water modeling that needs to be done for those two reports. Those are for the, um, water reliability study and the general plan update. The other two would be completed directly after that, but they utilize much of the same information, so the, um, water, the risk and resilience assessment, and emergency response plan, both then are started right afterward, and again, with the exact same information. And part of DLZ's contract, actually, this, the, um, the item that you pointed out is actually in regards to, um, they said acts of God, including delays attributable to the Corona pandemic. Part of that, as we discussed it with, uh, Mr. Reederman, was that the Eagle does allow some things to be delayed. They have given extended deadlines on some items. If the city itself were to not be able to provide the data on a timely basis, then DLZ would not be able to complete the reports on a timely basis. I don't perceive that being one of our issues, but that was one of the concerns they raised.
Okay, yes, I read, I read the full thing. I just, my, okay, so are we giving them fifty-two thousand dollars, even though some of the reports won't be done until next year?
That is the lump sum that, I think he said lump sum, but that the invoices would be rendered monthly depending upon how much work they had completed on the project. So it would be actual time billed, but not, and not one invoice for fifty-two thousand, no.
Okay, I guess, I guess that was, should have been cleaned up there to, to make it a little easier. Um, and then, I guess, I see that they get a lot of their information from SEMCOG as well. So I got, okay, so what is the, how accurate can this be going out twenty years? I'm just asking this for information.
Because of the, the reports are done every five years. It's, the next five years should be very reliable data. The five to twenty-year portion of that is a little more, um, estimated data, so they're just doing more projections, just as we do some of our other studies, like the rate study and so forth. So they're utilizing the data to give best predictions for what those things might look like after the five-year mark.
Okay, I just, I, even looking at their numbers, I was just like, it, it's just a little confusing to think that going out twenty years is going to really help us. I understand their five-year projection, even ten, but I think twenty, if we're paying for a twenty-year prediction, and it's just, you know, their, I, rough estimate, I think that, you know, I'd rather see them better use their time doing something else, um, to give better data.
Some of the twenty-year data, the planning data is more toward capital improvement, so looking out toward what things might, we really need to look on the horizon for in terms of looking at our system and what things we need to look at way down the line that, that are going to start to need to be replaced and/or may pose some risks to our system.
Okay, and I, I, I thank you for that. I, I just wish that they would have probably put it in their proposal a little better, more clear like that. It would have been easier to one hundred percent understand, so. All right, I will, I, I'll move to approve then, Mayor. Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, uh, was, is, is there a second? Do we?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Keithley, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, based on Councilmember Peterson's comments. So the data we're receiving from DLZ on a five-year basis is the raw data to meet requirement. The twenty-year projection is a, a guidance, if you will, for future infrastructure. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would just ask them to spell that out in their contract, though.
Okay.
We, we can spell that out before we sign it.
Okay.
His addendum.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have old business, so that we don't have any tonight. We don't have a public hearing, and we're on to legislative deliberations, legislative deliberations. Schedule a top lot grant public hearing. Mr. City Manager, you want to give a quick update?
Yep, so, um, this particular item, I know we, we've talked about it a few times. The state has allowed us to basically have extensions, um, but the state is now requesting that communities basically schedule their public hearings, so, um, about a year and a half, two years ago, we came before council, um, and saying, you know, there's about three hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements uh, over in our park, um, and instead of just asking for general fund dollars, we're going after, uh, grant dollars. So there's various grants that we're, we're looking for, um, uh, really money for, and the next step um, is really to schedule the public hearing. Um, for this one, we're asking for the public hearing to be scheduled out to, uh, the date of July thirteenth. And, um, we're hoping that that date, we should be able to have a live, in-person, public, um, hearing, uh, at City Hall.
Uh, well, we'll, we'll see how that goes, Blaine. Um, yeah, you know, may, maybe yes, maybe no, but, um, and we're not, so this is just to schedule a public hearing, we're not committing to any funds.
Correct.
You know, anything like that, so this is just for the public.
Motion to approve for a public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Keithley. Discussion.
I've got my hand up on the electronic thing.
I'm sorry, uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing the hand thing today, Blaine, or, but that's fine. Uh, Councilmember Albert.
Um, I just wanted to make sure, Blaina, you, you sort of explained it in your last answer, the July thirteenth is to hopefully get, you know, where we get public out. Does that in any way slow up our process if we wait till July for a public hearing? Or, or if we can't do it in July and have to go to August or September, does that in any way impact our grants and the work that we've done so far?
I don't believe so. Anthony is actually on our call too, and he's been the primary person, so Anthony, if you want to.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so what happened with the public hearing is we had that originally set for the second meeting in March, and of course, we had the shutdown, as, as Blaine mentioned, now we're kind of fast forwarding a bit. The state, uh, allowed us to, in communities, to say, hey, April first deadline is now. Turn in as much stuff as you can, and the public hearing, the support letters, you know what, we're gonna give you guys some leeway because we know this is just crazy time right now, so. But, um, that got pushed to August, uh, as the next middle date. So doing it in the first meeting of July doesn't postpone anything, doesn't now push, put us into any awkward spot. The state extended it to August, so we set it for the first meeting, uh, in July, and we have received, um, you know, thank you to the public, everyone that's already submitted support letters. We have a whole bunch of them. Uh, we'll, we'll post those for the public hearing, uh, night, and we're gonna, uh, continue to encourage anyone to, uh, to submit, because we're really trying to get uh, this grant, because the playground and equipment and that is, uh, very expensive, and getting a three hundred thousand dollar grant is, is huge, especially now.
Thank you.
Further questions? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. On to reports and regular business. First is the adoption of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. Mr. City Manager, um.
Yep.
Anthony and Marcy, um, floor is yours.
Okay, let me pull up and share my screen here. I just have a brief uh, PowerPoint. All right, so, um, this has been a, an interesting, uh, ye- year for us doing the budget, but again, um, staff started back last fall, and, uh, with the budget and finance committee have been able to go through um, the majority of the budget by the end of, uh, February, so, um, want to hit on some highlights and then answer some questions. Um, as is been the past, these are the city's general, uh, well, we have, here's the city fund, with the, the largest one being our general fund. Just spend a moment on a few, few. Again, I'm not gonna s- spend time kind of reading through the slides, but basically, we still have had a lot going on regardless of the COVID. Um, and we, we've made, uh, you know, some, some adjustments. Uh, the major one for this year's budget is not bringing forward any budget request items, uh, and basically presenting tonight the proposed budget without those requests. This, a few things that I do want to highlight, um, this budget, uh, so fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one is, uh, the overall total is, uh, twenty-nine point two million for all funds combined in the budget packet. Um, that's on, listed on, uh, table one. Um, wanted to note out that seventeen point six percent less than our current fiscal year, so that is a dramatic decrease. Um, of the total of the twenty-nine point two, fourteen point eight is our general fund, um, which after current expenditures is suspected, uh, we're anticipating a surplus of about, uh, three hundred and ninety uh, some thousand, so just under four hundred thousand, and that's on, uh, table three of the budget packet. And as people are going to be wondering what we're actually gonna be working on during this fiscal year, um, there are dedicated dollars for infrastructure, that's the point seven-five millage. Um, there are the low-interest loans that we've gotten through the SRF and the DWRF, as well as our various fees, um, which will allow us to continue to do, you know, various projects. In addition, as was just noted, um, we're going after various grants, um, which continue to keep our, our overall costs low. Addition, staff is continuing.
No.
In year.
Blaine, uh, you're breaking up again.
Blaine, can't hear you.
Um, Anthony, do you want to, uh, do you want to try, Anthony?
Oh, let me just unmute here.
My back?
I'll be back.
Back?
Uh, Anthony, why don't you pick it up until Blaine gets back together?
Hello, all right. I'll, I'll try if it loses connection.
Yeah, Blaine, you're break, Blaine, you're breaking up again, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, sure, I can, uh, I, we love these, uh, it always works out well.
Right.
Technology.
I know, technology is great here. Um, uh, so I'll let Blaine, if, when he gets that sorted out, jump back on to the, uh, presentation piece. But on the highlight, there are a lot of, uh, good things that we're seeing coming down the pipe. The COVID impact financially to the city um, has been on the top of everyone's mind, including myself, obviously. Uh, to see, you know, what is this gonna do to the city? What are the long-term impacts going to be? And, uh, and, and what do we, what do we need to do to, to start mitigating some of those? And, uh, on, on the front, for our major sources of revenue that are state sharing, uh, the, the, uh, our property taxes. All those are so far very stable. The state just gave us, uh, just a week or so ago, um, an, an update on what they think the impact will be to the, uh, revenue sharing, and our numbers budgeted are, uh, slightly more conservative, uh, than what the state even is projecting the, the impact will be. Um, various reasons for this, but that's all good news. And then on the Act fifty-one sharing, which is where we get the gasoline tax, we're anticipating that there's gonna be, you know, as we're seeing right now, the economy start opening back up again. Um, more types of jobs and classifications are opening up. So we're starting to see that, you know, just reflective in looking at what the gas prices are, right? The more people are using it, now there'd be, you know, it was like eighty-nine cents a gallon. I was the lowest I, I got at some point, uh, a few weeks ago, and, you know, now we're up to, uh, you know, just under two dollars, so we're, we're, we're seeing that. Um, as we roll forward, we're gonna expect to get those monies, uh, coming back in. Uh, as council, uh, made the motion and approved the resolution to suspend the, the parking fees pushing up to June thirtieth. That is one that, that we just don't know where, where that's gonna be, right? Are we gonna be totally back to normal, people coming back to town? Activities booming, everybody's happy again, you know, we can only hope so. Uh, but we're, we're, you know, that's one of those that's the closely, uh, the one most to watch, as it has the most volatile revenue source versus, um, our tax dollars, which is really set from the prior year, December thirty-first, uh, versus the revenue sharing, which is slightly delayed from sales taxes, so we're seeing all these, these parts, uh, to come forward. Uh, there are some, uh, on the water and sewer funds, we've seen the impact to be, uh, pretty much nonexistent for the most part. There hasn't been any significant impact to the water usages or sewer usages um, since this, uh, this pandemic started in March. So, uh, we're anticipating not much of a change there, and the surplus that's in the fund of just over six hundred thousand um, is all part of and supporting the, um, the multi-year infrastructure plan, uh, for those, for the, for the projects that are gonna be coming up. Uh, so we continue to be very strong financially, um, and then, uh, you know, not gonna go into so, so much detail. We covered a lot of this at the last council meeting with the public hearing. But, but things are looking, uh, very bright for the city. We continue to be very sound financially, and, um, the millage rates, you know, no increases being project, uh, being requested, um, or anticipated for the tax revenue. Um, and then the point one-nine mills for the OPC debt, this is the last year of that levy, so this time next year, that point one-nine mills for the OPC debt, the bond will have been paid off, so that will, uh, drop off over this next year.
All right, Blaine, are you back?
I think I am, yep.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I think I saw that pop, yeah, okay, cool.
So, um, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna guess on what Anthony actually, uh, you know, uh, talked about, but overall, um, you know, the city has, um, a very strong overall position. Um, there's a surplus in our general fund, which is just under four hundred thousand. There's various surpluses in our other accounts. The main one that is gonna need some additional attention is our parking, um, uh, fund, which again, we're getting assistance, uh, and thank you to the DDA. And again, overall, there is, uh, a budget that is presented that is basic, which I would say is covering the essential, uh, components from our contracts and our other obligations, as well as what I would consider the, uh, community uh, commitment items, which are the branch and leaf pickup, as well as garbage and recycling, um, and a few others. So it's a, a basic budget that is about seventeen percent overall below our current fiscal year's budget, which sets aside money into our reserve fund, um, about four hundred thousand, uh, from, for the general and in our various other surpluses, so that we can better address, um, what revenue is gonna be coming in once we have a better understanding from both the state and the county.
Did you? Okay, is it, is that, is that the end of what you want? Well, I was just gonna say, do you want to discuss the DDA situation as well? Or, let, let me rephrase that. How about discussing the DDA?
Should, sure, you know, so I, I, I think, um, you know, there's, you know, Christie's here, um, and, and can can, can speak, uh, you know, for, for the DDA or, or on that topic as well. Um, I know there's been questions in the past about the hundred thousand dollars that was a placeholder, um, and how some of that money will be, um, used. Right now, I believe, uh, a portion of that is for the, and Christie, forgive me, I'm just gonna call it the studio. Um, um, but the downtown studio, um, as well as some potential other projects. It's my understanding that some of that, those dollars are also going to be, um, reallocated to help out with the, uh, parking structure as well. Uh, and, and, uh, I don't know if, uh, Christie, if you have, I guess, a little bit maybe more specifics?
Sure, happy to jump in. So I know that, um, Ben has spoken to a few, few people on council. At the last meeting, he'd, um, heard, we heard from council that you were interested in, uh, beyond us paying the, uh, debt service on the parking deck bonds, that there was also looking for additional financial support for the other costs of maintenance ordinance officers, things like that. So, um, going before the DDA board, uh, tomorrow night, I believe, or excuse me, Wednesday night, um, from our existing budget that we wanted to allocate some monies into, I'm looking at my phone, because it's got all the stuff on it. Um, parking ordinance officer, uh, cost share on that, and then parking maintenance for May and June. Um, taking those two, it's roughly about, uh, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred additional that would be, um, put into the current budget fiscal year, um, going over to the city to help pay for those costs. And then again, going into the next fiscal year, which is the budget you're seeing in front of you, but we'd be, um, coming in with amendment, because again, this has to go before the full board for their approval would be to continue those payments, July, August, and September, um, both for the ordinance officer and parking maintenance, and I have the. And I have the monthly numbers on those, but, um, basically, we're looking to do as much support as we can for the city. We're cleaning out our entire front porch fund for everything that we're going to be doing, so. Um, those are things that are going to be coming before the DDA board. I suspect that the board will be, will receive them favorably. And then we'll be back before you again with another update.
Thank you. Uh, council member Keith Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Christie, for that update. I think we all are very appreciative of that. Although our city is in a very strong state financially right now, I think that as far as the budgeting committee, we wanted to see a very fiscally conservative budget because the state of the economy is so uncertain right now. We wanted to make sound financial decisions that were more on the conservative edge, knowing that we can make amendments moving forward. So I just want to say thank you to the finance team for working so hard on this budget and to administration for preparing it. I think that we made some really big compromises, especially with the DDA, and I feel grateful for extra support on that parking fund, um, as well as the support that you're lending, uh, through the PSD with some financial relief to our businesses. Um, I think that we worked really hard and worked together on this budget to present something that's very fiscally responsible and conservative moving forward. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget with the expectation that some of the funds from the DDA, that hundred thousand dollar line item, be committed to helping cover the costs of the parking structures, the debt service, maintenance, and parking attendant, as Christie just described.
Okay, so there's mo- motion by council member Keith Lee.
Support.
Support by, who was that?
Bivakwa.
By the mayor pro temp. So, uh, uh, councilor Peterson had her hand up next.
Um, but this year has to still be approved by the DDA board, correct, Christie?
It does, and it, we're not putting the whole hundred thousand to the parking structure. We're putting monies, more additional monies in, but part of that money is still going over to, um, pay for the studio and to, uh, transfer money into the PSD to help support additional funds. So we're not transferring that full hundred thousand to the city.
Council member Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we approve this, uh, this motion that does include and recognizes the, the participation by the DDA with respect to the parking, uh, debt service, maintenance, ordinance officer, and the PSD assessment, but yet the DDA board does not approve their amendment on Wednesday, where does that put us?
Correct.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, where does that put us?
Well, I, I guess we would be making a request for an amendment from the, the DDA. Board, um, and as, I guess, Mayor, has, has your, you're our, our, our board representative to the DDA, I guess, uh, you know, uh, I, I would, you know, provide whatever supporting, uh, information, and I'd be happy to join you in the Zoom meeting. And I'm sure Christie would also, you know, take, um, you know, what, what council is saying, um.
Let's just say, well, if, if the, what, our, our next city council meeting will be very interesting, I'll say. Uh, council member Albrecht, you had a comment?
I lowered my hand. I'll, I'll jump in after this conversation, this discussion's over, because I know Christie's going to hand up.
Uh, Christie?
I was just going to say, um, the DDA, even though they haven't had this discussion, because this came up in between our last board meeting and special meeting, I'm sure that they'll see it very favorably. I just wanted to clarify in the motion right now that it, um, says that we're transferring a hundred thousand dollars. That's not what we're asking the DDA board to do, so I would like some clarification in the motion to make sure that we're not committing to something that the DDA is not, um, in the position to agree to.
Correct. And, and in my conversations with, uh, DDA chairman Giovinelli, I mean, it was, you know, there's a, a good faith, um, comment on, on, Mr. Giovinelli and myself, who's a board member and stuff, but yes, it does have to pass the full board, of, of course.
And I, I believe, Mayor, the motion, in the motion, I stated that it would be funds from the DDA's hundred thousand dollar line item. Not, I, it wasn't intended to be that entire full amount, just funds from that line item.
Correct. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bivakwa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, wanted to, uh, uh, thank, uh, the newer council members, um, Keith Lee and Albrecht for, um, digging in on the, uh, the budget subcommittee. It was a pleasure to work with them on this, uh, no-frills budget and, and obviously with, uh, with administration, um, the finance team, uh, great work as always. I also wanted to, uh, to thank, uh, Christie and, uh, the folks on the DDA board, assuming that there's an approval, um, for stepping up even further, um, to, uh, to support the, the cost of the, the, uh, parking structures, parking structures and the, uh, associated maintenance and, uh, ordinance officer costs. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Further comments? Council member, uh, Albrecht now?
Um, I'll, I'll jump in now. We've always talked about, uh, the infamous three-legged stool, and I think this is an example of that. Um, the compromise, I, I also, um, reached out to council member, former council member Giovinelli, DDA Chair Giovinelli. And when, when you look at, um, uh, the, the discussions that were, were had over the last week or so to see that seventy-seven thousand dollars per month are going to go in the first three months of the fiscal next year towards, uh, the debt service, the ordinance officer, and the maintenance for the, uh, the part, the, the parking fund. And then you see the foresight, uh, you know, we've got a long road to hoe, and, uh, our businesses are going to struggle. And, um, you know, as Christie presented last month with the, the studio and, and this a hundred thousand dollar fund, we're really just trying to make sure that, uh, this long road of recovery is supported uh, as much as possible, and for the DDA to step up and offer these dollars, working with, uh, Anthony and his team, the mayor and council and everything else like that. I just want to commend them for that. Um, and, uh, um, having somebody like Ben as the DDA chair with his financial background and his knowledge of, of city council workings, this, uh, this was, um, uh, a, a lot of, lot of discussions, but, um, good action and results came out of this, so thank you.
Council member Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank everybody for this, but I truly want to thank the DDA for, as the liaison sitting there as well. There's been a lot of great discussion, and first and foremost, they have put the keeping all our businesses and, you know, doing business after that and looking for ways to make this all work. I think going above and beyond doing all of this additional right here is outstanding. Um, because there, you know, this wasn't free money that they've been sitting on, sitting there, just that was for something that was going to benefit the whole entire downtown. And I'm really, you know, disappointed that, you know, it's come to this year that we have to actually drain those funds and start over again, but, you know, it is what it is. I think, though, that, um, more consideration needs to be given to the, um, who's, who actually should be carrying some of this debt furthermore in the future as well? Because this debt service is for the whole community. It is not just for the business owners. And I think that we're really, I mean, right now, this is fine because we need that help. But I think as a council, we need to move in a direction to where we find other ways to fund debt service for these parking structures besides just this here. Because if you haven't really walked the streets of downtown, our businesses, if they can wait, make it through this here, are going to need a lot of help being able to sustain themselves. And it can't just take our small fifteen, sixteen thousand people. I mean, it's going to take many of a community to do this, so, um, I, I I wish I would have seen exactly where the seventeen that percent came from and the loss of the budget, you know, that's, you know, less that was more spelled out specifically. Um, but moving forward, I would like to see, um, us take care of this here and not put so much, uh, pressure on just one area of this here when we have been really, um, forking out a lot of money in a lot of areas, so, um, I am hesitant to approve the budget tonight without knowing exactly how far, uh, we are financially. I know every, I, I trust Anthony and his team and everything else, but the uncertainty of the future is, um, top of mind right now, so, um. I guess, oh, I'm going to stop right now, thanks.
I think council member Peterson makes a, a good point. I think that looking ahead, when we are in normal circumstances, that the DDA, you know, can, is not shouldering all of the parking structure debt. And I just feel grateful that right now they're stepping in because we've all made compromises, I feel, in our budget. We've put a pause on, uh, community house, uh, redevelopment, and to see the DDA step in and help in this way as we're trying to present a very conservative budget from the council standpoint, I feel very appreciative of that and would want to continue this strong working relationship with the DDA in the future to make sure that we continue to support our businesses.
Council member Salvia?
Yes, thank you. Um, so to the seventeen point six percent, so I'm not sure if it's Anthony or Blaine to clarify. Isn't, is that the six million dollars that is hopefully going to be allocated towards the DWRF project? But because we have not finished the engineering work on that, it's not included in the budget?
Uh, city manager?
He's muted.
Anthony?
Anybody?
Yep, was going to say Anthony's probably can jump in too. So on, um, uh, table one, it actually spells out the specific, uh, components. So the, the major, uh, reductions are towards, uh, the major roads, which is at sixteen point three, local roads, which is at ten point one, um, and then a large one, um, which is, uh, I guess, the bulk of the, um, uh, negative component, which is the water and sewer. So a lot of that, um, is being reduced as, uh, for a couple of reasons, our lead and copper component, so we had to, to get a, uh, an agreement with the, the state, uh, to move forward on some of our projects. So some things that we had, uh, budgeted last, this, well, I guess, this current fiscal year, um, almost at six million dollars, um, worth of work, um, is going to get spread out now over, uh, the course of a couple of years. Um, we'll have a little bit done this year. There's going to be more planning, um, really this upcoming fiscal year. And then, um, really, you see the, the ramp up, um, with, um, the, I guess, next two years and further, which aren't shown on that chart in twenty, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five, as we're starting to, um, complete really some of, um, um, the water and sewer projects. So to answer your question, um, uh, council member, uh, Salvia, yes, is the, I guess, the, the, the short answer, um, it's a lot of the water and sewer work, um, is the big challenge. Um, and some of that was out of our control due to, um, the lead and copper rule changes, as well as just then having to get in the drawings and, um, plans to get approved by the state, which we are continuing to work towards.
Correct. Great, thank you. So thank you for clarifying that, um, you know, seventeen point six percent, that's a big percent. So I just didn't want to, we're in a very strong position and a very, um, stable position. I feel, you know, we're, uh, very thankful to be where we're at. Um, but I just didn't want to overstate the good news there, that, you know, that's a, an essential water system that we are going to have to spend those dollars on, um, and it's just really more of a timing issue, um, for the, for the bulk of those. So I mean, I'm in support of this. I did have a good conversation today with, um, uh, Ben Giovinelli, um, for the DDA and got some good insights. I really look forward to hearing, um, and I don't want to get out ahead of their board, but I look forward to hearing the other ideas and what we're doing uh, to support the businesses and, you know, how we're going to allocate those dollars and, uh, work within the, the parking structures and, um, all of those creative ideas, because we definitely need them. So thank you, and I thank you to the budget committee for all the hard work on this. This is a very different year as it relates to the budget, but, um, it's good to be in a, a sound financial position.
Council member Sage, did you have a comment?
Quick question, uh, for Anthony. Um, last meeting, you mentioned that in our, our last, uh, downturn, we realized a, I think it was a ninety-two percent tax capture versus our normal ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So what level of confidence do we have, uh, going forward now that we won't dip below uh, the, the previous low, um, to keep this budget intact?
It's a great question. Uh, on the budget side in Michigan, any taxable amount that we, we except for personal property, which is a very small portion of the budget, even if it goes delinquent and is unpaid, is paid to the city from Oakland County. They, they take all of the real property and they make the cities and town, all of the municipalities whole. So we will, would get up to that ninety-nine point plus percent, um, uh, with the collections. The, the only thing that changes is kind of the timing of the, the cash flow. And that's where in our fund balance policy, should we have a low collection point? Um, we, we can weather it should we need it, but also we're, we're front-loaded, right? So, you know, due August thirty-first, we get all our tax money up through August. Well, the expenses aren't all immediate either, so we'll, we'll have a very, um, I don't have any concern about us having to weather, um, a delayed collection rate, um, tied in uh, with just when the timing of the collections are and the expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, councilor Peterson, then the mayor pro temp.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, um, also, I, I do want to thank, um, the finance team, uh, for doing a very good job, uh, and the budget committee as well, even though I, we, during these times, we haven't really had communications as such regarding all the detail. Um, I would, I would like to know, though, is there a way that in this motion that we do not have the, the separate um, addition to the DDA wants, uh, a DDA, um, hundred thousand, just because it has not been voted on? I've always been a stickler for that. If it hasn't been voted on, that it's not, it could actually be an amendment later on. Um, only because in good faith, this is where they're at, and we don't know what else could actually happen. So until that full board actually does that, um, being a liaison to that, I think that would be only the right thing to do. And also, um, do we have in this current budget, uh, everyone is still going to have their, um, continual raises that they had, um, would be getting normally yearly for the regular employees? I guess, city manager?
Council member O'Connor, you had, uh, uh, city clerk O'Connor, you had a question?
Um, Your Honor, as far as the motion goes, is it to adopt the budget, the, uh, resolution to adopting the fiscal year end twenty twenty-one um, budget like, uh, we have in the packet then?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
City, city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, passing this budget in, you know, technically without the extra money from the DDA, the DDA is going to have a vote on Wednesday whether to add that. This budget technic, while we have, we think we have an agreement in principle, the technic, technically, we do not have this money in the budget right now. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
I guess, yes and no. The money is, is there in the DDA's budget. It's in a line item that then would have to be changed. So, um, the, the council would be voting on, um, the overall budget that would have the line item in there. The DDA just has not adjusted that component, so it would still be in the, the DDA's business development line item and would need to be adjusted, or they could pull it from another one. Um, so council would be, uh, voting on the, the budgets, if you will, as is. And then there would be an amendment that, uh, would need to come forward to reallocate the dollars, um, from the DDA's budget to the parking fund.
Marcy, you had a comment?
That's exact, I was just going to reiterate what Blaine said. If you choose to approve the budget tonight as it is stated, then after the DDA votes and makes an amendment to their budget, then we can adopt that into our budget, but it, it's not going to significantly change what you would be voting on. You would vote on today's budget. You can move forward with that. The DDA can then make an amended budget, which we can incorporate into the city budget.
Okay.
Uh, councilor Peterson, is that?
Yeah, that's, that is fine. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that. Yeah, that's that is fine. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we weren't adding something and that wasn't voted on yet.
And Mayor, if I could answer, uh I guess the other question was in regards to the uh the wage increases. So the wage increases for the union contracts are included in the current budget. The um the non-union would need to be a request that I would need to come to council for um with the uh salary ranges. And a request for a certain dollar amount um once we've calculated what that would be um from council. So those at this point are not included. Um uh there's not authorization for those wage increases to uh to go into effect at this point. There would need to be a budget amendment.
Right, thank you, Mayor. I just uh some residents asked me about that, so I wanted to make sure it was public.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Protem Bavakwa.
I think it, it was really just a follow-up question for Anthony um regarding the comment that he made. Um uh it was in regards to the um the county. Uh providing the funds for us uh in regards to our tax assessments. Um now, at some point, do they require that we um? You know, credit that money back to them if they don't receive it, or how does that work? Are they liable um for those funds and and have to, you know? Uh bring in uh somebody to to try to to chase those those uh uh those payments? How does that work?
Uh you're you're right on with that one. So what happens is we we have, and the uh tax collections, we settle up settle up at the county and say. This is how much we collected, here's the delinquent roll, here's all of the properties and everything of who owes money still. That has not paid their taxes. The county takes all of that in aggregate for all their municipalities, they end up issuing bonds and. Take all of those properties onto their collections, they start charging interest, transfer fees. And they go after the property owners and in the case of of personal property, they go after the personal property assets. Um for those uh that still owe the money until they pay it. Now, fast forward past the two-year mark, and let's say they just are not getting anything. Like, we're we're not getting the money, they're not paying um, you know, what happens next? So with real property, uh they say, hey, city. And and council may remember this, two years ago, I think three years ago, we had one. Um they get a last chance, otherwise they get foreclosed on. The city has the option of purchasing the property for the taxes owed. And that's kind of the, like, we have to give it back, so so they say, hey, or they. They give it back, so we didn't collect this, sorry. Um if you you want it, then you need to give us the money back. And if you don't want it, then they put it up for auction. And then the minimum starting price for the auction is all-inclusive of the taxes, fees. All of those other components as well. Um that'll go for auction, anything above that minimum amount, the county gets to keep by statute. And then uh should it, for some reason, not sell, or they don't get any bids on it. Then at that point, it goes back to the cities to say, sorry, you have to give us that money back for that property.
Okay, so it's a long process for that for us to actually have to pony up that money um in the event that it's not paid by the by the resident or?
Oh, very, very much so, yes.
Yeah, excellent.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, I'm just going to add that it's at least four years. I I work at tax foreclosures at the county and it's four, almost four years, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of uh lot of second chances, lot of please make payment plans.
And very rare for your community as well, very rare for Rochester.
Right.
Right, hopefully, hopefully it stays that way. Uh further, further discussion from council. No, well, I just like to first add thank you to uh city staff. Uh Blaine, Anthony, Marcy for their hard work on this. I know it's a big project every year. Thank you to the Budget Committee for getting into the nitty-gritty. Um you know, that's a lot of work and especially for the new council people, you know, to get into the budgets. You know, a lot, a lot of, a lot of time and effort, so appreciate that. Um also, you know, thank you to the D DDA for kicking in some more money, I think, I think that's appropriate. And again, in talking with people, um I think everybody was really working on, you know, trying to be reasonable. And realizing it's a difficult time. And so I think um, you know, it worked out well. I I think our city is very strong financially. But I think we also, you know, really reacted well to the crisis and said, hey, let's wait and see and let's be very conservative. So while we were strong financially, we were also, I I believe, very prudent. So I think this is an excellent budget, this is as good as it's gonna get in these difficult times. And we are well positioned for whatever happens. Uh hopefully, it's all good, but if it's not, we'll we'll be prepared. And um we're strong for this, so um congratulations to everybody. And Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Okay, the budget is passed. Um moving on to other budget things, um is bonding and the city's pension liabilities discussion. Your City Manager.
Yes, we also uh thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh council again. Uh that that's actually since I've been here, our first budget that we've passed unanimously. So I appreciate uh the support and again, everybody's uh efforts. Um to continue the strong fiscal uh uh strength of our community. Um staff has been looking at with our consultants and then again through our Budget and Finance Committee. Um the um the pension liability um that is outstanding and potentially bonding. Um for that liability. Um we have a couple consultants um on on this evening's call. Um as they'll kind of walk us through. Um really what we're trying to do is there's about a nine million dollar liability. Um that's outstanding with our 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 pensions. Again, I'll note that our pensions have been closed um with all of our unions and with our non-union employees. Um new employees are hired in with a defined contribution compared to a defined benefit plan. Um the city also is uh still maintaining a triple A bond rating. So um when we would go out to bond, we would actually, uh that's the highest there there is. So um we would have very favorable rates, which again, our bond counsel and uh consultants can speak to. Basically, we have about fourteen years left on our um liability, which is currently through MERS. And um that would ramp up as we've closed our plans, that our payments would actually have accelerated from, let's just say, it's about seven fifty. Uh now, um up to about one point three million um in the future as we get closer and closer to. The end of that fourteen years. What we're able to do by bonding for this is actually get into the market and um. Uh basically, similar to a a mortgage on a home to actually basically refinance, if you will. And lock in at a lower uh bond rate that would also be um a sustainable uh component. So if that ends up being at like seven hundred, um for the fourteen years, we would then be paying out at that amount. What we're estimating um is that with a lower bond um rate. Um than what we're currently paying for our payments, um that would equate to about three to four million dollars. Uh depending on when we'd go out to the market. Um Anthony, I I think maybe I'll I'll hand it over to you and then we'll probably uh pass it off to each of our consultants. Uh Tom Colas uh and then Andy Campbell. So Anthony, if you wanna.
Anthony?
Sure, sure, thank you. I'll I'll just add a very small piece, cuz I know this is gonna be mainly Q and A, a lot of questions, right, with this. Um definitely, we uh, when this got brought up, it's been a while now. Uh as we worked through all the steps and process and and created the, you know, the comprehensive financial plan and in doing all the other steps that go along with it. Um it it did check all of the very stringent boxes legislatively that Michigan puts forth. That even lets you consider to do this. Um and we exceeded uh, we exceeded all of those. And then on the the long-term planning, um you know, the financial stability, uh the predictable payment uh portions. And then um on the unpredictable side, you know, if there's changes in the experience study and we, you know, people are living longer and so we we owe more. That would happen no matter what. So yeah, what this does is this allows us to have um not only savings initially. Uh once we, once we go forward with this, but the savings increases over time over that next fourteen years. Uh so so you can see even in the schedule, you know, we're over four hundred thousand dollars a year in savings towards the, you know, the twenty. Thirty-two, twenty thirty-three uh timeframe. So fast forward to COVID twenty thirty-three. Um you know, that extra four hundred thousand dollars plus in savings that you would not have to be paying. To the legacy pension costs can go to strategically other priorities for the city at the time. So that's uh, that's my quick summary for that.
Mayor, if I could maybe have uh Tom Colas just kind of summarize where we're at in the uh the process and tonight. What what authority we're seeking, uh and then uh Andy can maybe help answer some questions on the 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 uh overall. Um um items. So Tom.
Mr. Colas, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Well, good evening. This process is is relatively similar to a process that most of you have experienced when we've done capital improvement bonds. So there's really a, with a couple of additional layers. The first layer is the preparation of the comprehensive financial plan. Uh and again, we've worked with city staff and they put together the the plan. The plan is required by state statute and it and in the contents of the plan are also required by state statute. So um the information that's been provided in there satisfies all the requirements under state law. And to initiate the process, the council would have to approve a comprehensive financial plan. Now again, that plan can be amended later on as more up-to-date information becomes available. Um so, but to initiate the process, we start with a plan approval. And then we can move forward to actually authorizing the publication of a notice. So the resolution you have before you accomplishes both of those things. It approves the plan and it authorizes publication a notice in the paper. Um that city intends to issue bonds in amount not to exceed nine million. And again, the projected uh bond issue size is is lower than that. But depending upon how some of these tables come out and any changes in the market. Um you know, we would set a ceiling and not to exceed nine million. Again, that that notice goes in the paper and has with it the right of referendum. Um we would come back to council later on to actually authorize issuance of the bonds. So this is really steps one and two of a multi-step process. We come back to council for future consideration for the actual bond size. Um and then after that, we then actually have a formal meeting with the Department of Treasury. So that is another unusual step in issuing pension obligation bonds that we don't have. When we're doing other traditional types of bond issues where we're just relying upon the the city's existing qualified status that they get through Department of Treasury. Here, Treasury wants to actually have a meeting with the city to review the financial plan, to review all the statistics associated with it. And make sure the city's actually done their due diligence as to, you know, analyzing, you know, issuing pension obligation bonds. So that'll be part of the steps that we'll take going forward before we actually get into the market to actually issue the bonds. Um so again, tonight's um action would be to consider the resolution, which would authorize, which would approve the plan. Once the plan's approved, it was required to be posted on the city's website. And then once it's posted, we can then publish the notice in the paper uh following the posting on the website.
Uh Councilmember Peterson, you had a question? You need to, you need to.
I know, I just, I muted myself just because, um okay, so my question is, how do we during this time right now? Um offer the citizens of the community the right of referendum? When you cannot really go and get petitions signed, et cetera?
No, thi- this is, thi- this is not uh that kind of referendum.
Well, it says here that they could do that.
Mr. Colas?
Yes, that I mean, certainly they could. So what we could do is, you know, we could build into our schedule some additional time to allow for that notice. So we could authorize the uh the the plan being approved, get it posted on the website. And then wait a period of time to actually publish the notice. Cuz the publication of the notice starts the clock for the filing of the petition. So we could determine to wait on that until certainly maybe after, uh you know, maybe a stay-at-home order is have expired. Or something to that effect, so that there's a requisite amount of time that council would feel comfortable that um has provided that notice.
All right, Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
So I I, you know, I understand um and have spoken with, you know, finance about this purpose and I I it makes sense, et cetera. Um I do, I do care, though, that our citizens under this time right now would not have an opportunity to. Um you know, tell us yes, no, or file their petition and things like that. Uh but if you could, could you help me understand um the dollar amounts of on? It would be on page thirteen, or actually, it's eighty-seven, um our packet thirteen. On the analysis using the market value of assets, because it appears, these are questions I've received as well. Um it appears that it starts low and then payments seem to be almost double. Is that correct? Are they reading this right?
I I think I can help you. Are you looking at the uh, this is Andy, by the way, um are you looking at the hours up? Good to hear from everybody. Uh the the second column, the total UAL amortization payment?
Correct. Yeah, that no.
That is actually, yep, go ahead.
No, I just, that was what the uh the question was from the public, yes.
Yep, so that is actually your current estimated liability according to MERS. So that, if we didn't do anything on the bonding, that is MERS um best guess, as you can say. As to what your liability would be year by year. What we're trying to do is to move that into the blue boxes. And the third box in third column under the blue area there, so it's the fourth column of numbers after the date.
Yep.
And our hope would be to move it to more of a level um payment from here on out. So instead of going from seven hundred eighty-seven thousand and you go up to one point four million. Under the bonding scenario, we're targeting to be between or like started about eight hundred thousand and it tops out at about eight forty. So that's really, yep.
No, I appreciate.
That's really one of the major goals.
No, um and it makes the, and I know from finance, it makes a ton of sense that, but when the public was looking at this, it was their question. So I wanted to make sure it was addressed. Um so going back, uh Mayor, to um the referendum, how can we do this at this? So it doesn't delay things, but it does give the public an opportunity if they wanted to file their right of referendum.
Uh Mr. Manager, I mean, I assume that, well, you know, the these are official public meetings. That we're conducting.
Well, and also, we're, we won't have this on the website until council gives the approval to move forward. And then we would post the comprehensive financial plan to the city website. So then they would have a chance to look through the details and ask questions after that, too.
So so it actually maybe twisted a little bit, I think we'd wanna, or maybe adjusted, maybe twist is a little incorrect. Um post it to our website if council chooses. And then as as um Tom Colas noted, the clock actually doesn't start till it's published in the newspaper. So um what I would, I guess, be seeking tonight based on the conversation is to state that. Um to get council's authorization to publish it once the stay-at-home order has has ended. And so like right now, that would be currently the, as of the the end of the eighth of May. Um it typically takes us uh a minimum of three days if we, depending on which paper we publish it in. Um after that, but if it's already up on our website, residents be able to look at this information. After that, but if it's already up on our website, residents be able to look at this information. Um, and then, um. The clock wouldn't start for that 45 days. Tom, if I'm correct, uh, please, you know, please chime in, um. So the clock wouldn't start till it actually got published. Yeah.
Yeah. So you could, exactly right. So the posting of the plan doesn't start any clock. That's just a requirement under the statute. The publication of the notice is when the referendum period starts from the publication date. So we could wait. Until after any of the executive orders expire to actually have the notice published. And then we'd start. So you're really only talking a couple of week delay under the current, um, executive orders right now. In publishing the notice. But I would move forward again to, to the extent it's the council's desire to approve the plan. I would move forward with getting it posted right as soon as possible. So that, um, people have the ability to review the plan, the comprehensive plan. And then follow up subsequently with the posting and with the publishing in the paper.
And, and Mayor, just one other question?
Yeah.
Okay, um, also on that page below that table, it says the acknowledgement of future annual required contributions. It does state that. It is possible the unfunded accrued liability may increase after the issuance of the bonds. Thereby, uh, requiring the city to make additional actuary determined, um, amorti- amortization payments, uh, to the defined benefit. So. I guess to the finance team, are you comfortable with that?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mayor, if I can.
Anthony?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So, um, we're very comfortable with that. The thing that, uh, to keep in mind as well as. We will still have continued payments, uh, to MERS. We, there are still employees of the city, um, you know, granted they're getting a bit older now, uh, since when the plan was closed that are still in the plan. So. Every year that's worked, um, is another year we still have to pay for. Uh, if there's changes, so as noted, you know, in, in the actuarial report that we're expecting to get at the end of the month slash first week of June. They're changing their, their rate, going from seven, seven, five percent down to 7.35 percent. So every time there's a change. That, that creates, uh, that affects the liability in some way. So it, it can make it go down. It can make it go up. In the case of the return going down, it's going to make the liability go up. Uh, with the way the funding works is four years from now, once we hit the 10-year mark, anytime there's a change. They reevaluate what that liable liability amount is. And then they give you another 10-year payoff for it. So. Let's say in 2025, when they do, or 26, when they would look at their next experience study, because they're just wrapping up the one now. And there's a change and it creates some delta amount. And let's say it's, it's never to the good, right? It'll say it's, it's gonna, you know, it'll always be to the bad. They'll have the option of saying, hey, uh, that was, uh, $50,000 is, is the effect of this change. You can pay it upfront. Um, or you can pay $5,000 a year, making it simple for the next 10 years. Um, and, and then that keeps building layers. So. In perpetuity post us being a hundred percent paid off of and funded. We will always still have those changes, um, until the very, uh, until, until the plan is officially closed.
Okay. I thank you very much for that. And hopefully that helps the public as well.
Councilmember Albrecht and then Councilmember Salvia.
I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna let, uh, uh, Councilmember Salvia go first. She's the financial expert. I'd like to hear what she has to say. I just wanted to then give sort of a recap of what we did on the budget and finance committee and make a motion, but I'll defer my space to Councilmember Salvia.
All right. I just had a couple of things to say. One is I think it's very important that the public knows that. The city administration of council is still, you know, obviously fully committed to the pension, funding the pension. You know, there's no change in that commitment. I think anytime you start talking about people's pension money, everyone gets a little nervous. So this is. Actually a very smart move on the city administration to, um. Secure and be able to fund those pensions, um, in a much more conservative manner. Um, so it makes them more safe, if you will, going forward for the people that we actually owe these pensions to. Um, secondly, I think it's very important that, um, and I know all of council feels this way is our triple A rating is very important to us. And so, you know, all of our indicators is that should not change our triple A rating. It could slightly. Be viewed as more favorable because it's such a conservative approach to, um, paying for this liability. So I think that's important. It's important for the public to know that we look at that very responsibly. Also, I want to credit the mayor on this. Um, this is something that he started working on when he was, you know, voted in by us, um, to be the mayor. He said to administration, challenged them and said, we've got a lot on our plates, but we need to look at our pension liability. What can we do? Interest rates are very low. Um, how can we take advantage of this? So I'm very, you know. Right now, when we're in a bit of a crisis mode, this is some great news, but you know, things like this take time to develop. So. I've spent some time with finance department and answered quite a few questions around this. Um, but I just think it's a great, smart move. And so I'll turn it over to you, um, Councilmember Albrecht.
Councilmember Albrecht, thank you. Councilmember Salvia.
I, I try to stay in my swim lane, which is human resources. So thank you, uh, Councilmember Salvia for, uh, for providing that, uh, eloquent, uh, uh, overview. When, um, uh, the budget and finance committee, when, uh, Mayor Protem Bavacqua and. Uh, fellow council member Keakley and I first, uh, had this presented to us, uh, back in April. Shortly thereafter, Blaine had put in his, uh, uh, weekly mayor's report, some of the reasons. Why this was needs to, this is a good idea, which are articulated again in this, uh. Memorandum that was memorandum that was part of our package. We've heard about the, you know, uh, the council member Salvia talked about the triple A rating. That was one of the questions we asked. That Friday morning when we got together and, um, you know, when we have, uh, $70 million in capacity. Even with our bonds we currently have with the decks and, and, uh, some of the physical structures that this may help our triple A rating. I think the part that really convinced me was that this, the, the, the table that council member Peterson was directing, um. Andy Campbell to, when you saw that variation sort of like. Not like a balloon payment, but like a mortgage payment that kept going up year after year after year after year. It was like, what the heck? And this sort of smooths it all out somewhere in the eighty, $800,000 a year bond payment. So to me. That made a lot of sense, uh, to us. And then finally, um, uh, I know that, um, uh. I also salute the mayor for getting this going, but, uh, when you look at the, the point that, um, we're, we're. We're really being aggressive here in terms of doing this, uh, to be more conservative with our, with our finances. When you look at. We'll be the third community to issue pension bonds with the, within the last six months. You know, we're a line leader here. So, um. I, I, I like what, what's been presented, um, uh, and I, I would like to make the motion to issue the notice of intent and approve the comprehensive financial plan. That's been presented today by, uh, uh, City Manager Blaine and, uh, and Finance Director Mogio.
And I'll support that.
The motion by council member Albrecht, support by council member Peterson, discussion, uh, Mayor Protem Bavacqua.
Yeah, I just, I just had a question regarding, uh, the, the fees associated with. With the bond in regards to that table on page 13 that's been referenced. Do, uh, are those incorporated in there in terms of, you know, the numbers we're seeing in savings? Or is it just not something that's considered at all i- in, in these, uh, projections?
The, all the costs are already in those projections. So we've gotten fee quotes from a lot of the members in the working group. We'll be sending that stuff obviously to, uh, Blaine and Anthony and Marcy and the team. Uh, as we get along in the process, but all that stuff is in there. Um, obviously the, the biggest. Uh, variable, and I wanted to touch on it real quick if I could, is that. It, the market has been haywire, obviously in the past two months. Um, so there's, that's the biggest uncertainty. Yeah, we've had scenarios that are at one interest rate and then a month later it's at a completely different interest rate on your deal and other deals. So. These are obviously very estimated right now. We're hoping they're, they're conservative, but, um, we've got about. What, three months or so until we price potentially if everything goes smoothly. So. Market's quieting down thankfully, uh, a little bit. So hopefully we'll be in a good position, but, um, the costs are in there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, council member Peterson, you had another question?
Oh, I just, I, I did want to, I, I mean, I'm very confident in our finance team right now, and I thank everybody for their time and efforts in this. Just the clarity for the public, uh, most importantly, that they are, have their rights in there. Um. I, I'm okay with, um, moving forward with this. Um, and I do know that if there was hesitation due to that market and what the market may do, which, uh, which is unforeseen. I would trust that the finance team would have already let us know that it wouldn't have been a good idea. So, um, thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, Madam, uh, City Clerk, you had a comment?
I do. Um, the motion is not clear as to when you want them, the notice published. To put some language in there that it delayed until after the governor emergency order is lifted. Words in your mouth, but there, as of right now, there's no guidance in the motion as to. Whether I should or shouldn't put the notice in the paper immediately. So.
I will amend the motion to, um, uh, to issue the notice after the, uh, governor of Michigan's, uh, shelter in place order has been lifted. So that, uh, the community has ability to see the posting, um, in the papers.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Peterson, are you okay with that?
Um, well, question, should it be the state of emergency or the shelter in place? Because there's, there's two different ones.
Yep.
State of emergency doesn't, doesn't mean that people can't, um. Uh, leave their homes.
Right. It can go longer. Correct. You stay home, stay safe.
Go shelter in place.
Yes.
I would stay with shelter in place.
Okay.
Uh, council member, you're the second council member Peterson. Are you okay with that?
Um, yeah, that's fine. As long as everyone believes that that's the one that matters the most because. My, my concern is what if not, um, okay, so that's lifted, but the city is not back to fully functioning. I mean, I just want to make sure we don't have anything started before we really can to where there's any problems later on. That's all.
I, I, I completely understand that. I, I, I would argue the city is fully functioning right now.
No, I meant, I meant to the public's eye, fully functioning. Everyone can go into the city. They can do what they need to do and we're back in business that way. So.
Very good.
Yep. That's fine. I'll approve that.
Okay, further. Comments from council? I, you know, I'd just like to say, as Councilmember Salvia said, we are protecting our, our retirees. Um, which is important. But we're also protecting the city. This is a very conservative move. It's, it's a, to me, it's a great move. And there's nothing better we can do for the future of the city is to get our. You know, legacy costs and things under control the best we can. So I think this is a great start and. Uh, the sooner the better on this. Um, and it sounds like we've got a good plan. And I, I think interest rates, no matter what the market does, that are going to stay extremely low. Um, so, you know, this is a group. As bad a time it is, this is probably a good time to be doing this. So without further ado, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Colas and Mr. Campbell for coming tonight. And, um, thank you to the finance staff for all their hard work on this and Blaine as well. I think this is a very good move. Okay. Uh, next we are on to the mayoral appointments for board and commissions. I'm going to go through the list, um. You know, you, usually we have people have to reapply. I, I think. You know, some people did not apply. I think this whole state of emergency has kind of put this process a little bit in. You know, behind than that we usually are. So there are some vacancies for both mayoral appointments and city council appointments and that we all need to. You know, work on making sure that we get people for these. So first for Brownfield redevelopment, I'd like to nominate Julie Quinlan Dufresne. And I think, uh, maybe, uh, the city clerk can get you this list afterwards if. You don't want to write all these down.
Yeah, it was, your honor, the lists were in the packet.
Yeah, but we have them online.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Next for the cemetery advisory board, Jack and Beth DeFranco. What's the old saying? Uh, a couple that serves on the cemetery board together stays together, something? Can't resist that one. Uh, city beautiful commission, there's a vacancy. So, you know, anybody come up with that? Same with the compensation committee. Uh, construction board of appeals, Frank Rewald, all point. Downtown development authority, Chris Johnson and Tony LaPuma. Historical commission, Matt Sur, Lynn Anderson. Si Servarino and Chad Nightingale. Parking management advisory committee, Jason Bay. Planning commission, Eric Lord and Sarah King. And the principal shopping district, Kevin Stewart and Suzette Louise. So those are the, um. Appointments and then the city council will approve those or not at the, at the next meeting. Is that correct, uh, city clerk?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. And now we're on to city council appointments for boards and commissions. Anybody? Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, for the, uh, prop, the tax evaluation group. I don't have that form in front of me. It's online.
Order review.
Yeah, border review. Like to nominate, uh, Juanita Malman.
Councilmember Keakley, did you have?
I, I did. Mayor, if we may go back, did I see on the city beautiful commission, there is a vacancy, but it looks like there was an applicant. I, I'm not sure if that applicant is maybe not qualified, but Victor Chavez. The city beautiful commission.
He, he does not live in the city, uh, Madam Clerk.
Yes, that's correct, your honor. Sorry.
Yeah, got it. Thank you for that clarification.
And to that point, um.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua.
Thank you. Um, he's also, uh, applied for border review, um, not, not eligible.
Correct.
So, uh, historic, you're eligible if you're not a resident, but all, pretty much all the rest are.
Sage, he, uh, we had this conversation today. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. So the historical commission by charter allows, um. I think, uh. Not less than 10% outside of the city of Rochester to be on, to serve on the commission. But that is one of the few that has that provision in their charter.
Okay. Yeah. So there's a, there's a hodgepodge of. You can be in the city, you can't be in the city. But for those, unfortunately for those couple that this person wanted to be on, he, he could not. Any further nominations? And again, for, for the ones where there's vacancies, let's all try to get together and recruit some, you know, find some good people. And again, I think because of the COVID. You know, things, you know, people weren't getting their applications in and stuff. So I think that's part of the, part of the issue this year. So, uh, council member Salvia.
So from a process standpoint, do we want to give it like 30 days and let council work the openings and then. Uh, Leanne, how would that work? Just so we kind of know what we need to do.
Um, so you have, you have your lists of your vacancies and, um, I can forward, actually I, um. Included in a link, the, the entire boards and commissions list for you to know. Um, we can advertise again, um, that we're still taking applications for boards and commissions and. Just follow the process, um, that we have, because there, there was an awful lot. And this is after, you know, a couple of different notices on the website as well. So. We can.
Would you advise 60 days? Maybe, I mean, we're at home for another three weeks. So 60 days?
Sure. Well, uh, and they can apply online. So, and that's where the, the. So maybe we want to go 30 and, and if we need to renew it another 30 and go like that. Sure, well, uh, and they can apply online, so, and that's where the, the, so maybe we want to go 30 and, and if we need to renew it, another 30 and go like that. So maybe to the end of, um, of May, hmm, first, first meeting of June.
Sounds good.
Uh, Councilmember Sage and then Councilmember Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So also, maybe I think we need to make a decision regarding the historic district commission, whether it has, uh, served its, its purpose now and could be, um, sundowned, uh, at a future meeting. And also, a potential opportunity for discussion, uh, to provide compensation, whether, a minimal amount for those volunteers that, uh, serve on these boards and commissions.
Councilmember Albert?
I just had a question for, um, uh, Leanne, our, our city clerk. On the Payne Creek Railway Commission, uh, packet you sent us, it says, um, city council alternate. Does that have to be a city council member or?
Yes.
Yes.
If, if anybody wants to be, um, be the alternate, they're.
I'll sit on that. You want me to have be the alternate?
That's, if anybody else wants to. Okay. Well, do we need to vote on that, Council, uh?
It's a council appointment, right?
Right.
It, it is, um, but I think when you're doing council members, you don't usually.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay. Uh, Mayor Protem Bavacqua?
Yeah, I guess a couple of things, um, so we're waiting, but do we want to nominate the renewals? Do we need to ren, do, do we need to nominate the renewals on the zoning board of appeals?
That would, that would be good.
Yes.
Okay, so, so I'll nominate, uh, Dennis Fleming and Frederick Van Damme for ZBA.
Okay.
And then, um, a comment that I have, um, maybe for Jane, can, can we send out a communication to the HOAs to let them know what the open positions are? Um, and have them try to circulate it. I'll put, I, 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 I generally put a notification on my, uh, subdivision Facebook page. It doesn't, hasn't done any good, but I'll continue to do it, um, and maybe that's another avenue we can approach.
Great idea.
Yes, and Leanne, I, I think if you could send, maybe create a list after this meeting, create a list of the vacancies so all of us can have it, and then if they need to live in the city or not.
Okay.
We just, you know, just a quick email to everybody.
The Excel sheet that I send you guys out actually has, um, you'll see on your sheet here, it does have, um, what the requirements are there, three-year term, five members, but, um, I'll try to make that more clear, um, and put some more language in it.
Yeah, may, may, maybe like a one pager.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So also, board of review needs an alternate as well.
We don't have. We need two.
Two alternates on there as well.
Yes, and that was newly adopted and approved by you guys just earlier this year, so.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so any, you know, move forward with that, and then we'll vote on these, uh, next week, next meeting, the ones, both mayoral and city council.
Very good.
Thank you. Next is a report for boards and commissions. We have a report from the planning commission, uh, Mayor Protem Bavacqua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, really only had one item on the agenda, but it, it was a three-hour item. Um, we received a, uh, presentation from, um, the Michigan, uh, Association of Planners, um, regarding master planning to help us, uh, prepare for our, um, revision to the master plan if we choose to undertake it, so. Um, I won't go into great detail, but a lot of it was about engaging the community and, and the steps you need to take in order to, uh, to put together a, uh, you know, a master plan that's beneficial to, to the community overall.
Yeah, I would just add, there was a lot of good information. I will say there were 110 slides. So.
You can watch it if, if you want, it's available on the website.
That, that probably tells you all you need to know right there, and. Um, all right, next is a report from the tree committee, and we'll go to the tree committee chairperson, Councilmember Albert.
Yes, I'd like to thank, um, my fellow council, uh, member, uh, Salvia, who nominated me and voted me in, uh, for the first annual tree committee, uh, chairperson. Uh, but seriously, um, the, the mayor had asked us to meet on really a narrow scope. And, um, we went back to the mayor last meeting, if you remember, and said, we'd like to really expand that, and, um, we've put together a good committee, uh, um, of course, fellow councilmember Salvia, Mayor Protem Bavacqua, our city attorney, our resident forester, Nick Banda. And then we have really two passionate, um, citizens, Melissa Wees, who's often been at our city council meetings, talking about trees and, and, and very passionate. And a builder, um, a designer, Bill Thomas. So between that committee, uh, we've met, uh, twice. And at this, uh, most recent meeting, which was on May 4th, uh, excuse me, May 1st, uh, the notes went out May 4th. We decided we wanted to, to broaden the scope and establish some goals, um, so I'd like to share with you, it's in your packet, but just provide a, a, a brief, um, uh, uh, discussion. We, our, our four goals that this committee will be working on is establish an annual tree report to include tree canopy coverage and present to city council. Um, I know Nick had shared with us a, a memo that was in one of our packets back in February, but we feel that if we are truly a tree city, we need to bring, we want to, you know, have this in, in the public eye and, and talk about it, uh, regularly, at least once a year. Uh, of course, we are going to review and revise the existing tree ordinance, which was sort of the purview of, uh, uh, or the ask of, of the mayor in establishing this committee. We also wanted to review the commercial development home builders provisions of the tree ordinance. Um, and, uh, uh, felt that, uh, that is something we need to look into. And then last but not least, and the one I'm, uh, the, the, speaking on behalf of the committee, we are all very, very passionate about, was allocate the annual tree fund accordingly to reinvest in trees for the future. You know, we have this money in there, and as of the last meeting, um, we had $36,000 in the tree fund, not including some, uh, fines that were, or levies or whatever that were, were, were coming in. And Nick talked to us about that we have been a tree city for six years. Rochester Hill's been a tree city for 25 years. We are really in the point right now where we are establishing what our tree canopy is going to look for the next 20 years. And we want to have a very thoughtful plan. Councilmember Salvia talked about a, an app where you can look overhead and see what our tree canopy is, and I think it was somewhere of a 26% tree canopy, and, and we, we want to be able to say, okay, is that, can, can we grow that over the years so that our children and our children's children, um, can, can enjoy the fact that we are 26 years as a tree city, not just six years? So, again, very, um, big hairy audacious goals, uh, but, uh, this group is very passionate about doing that. And I look forward to presenting more reports from the tree committee to city council and really letting the public know that we are taking us being a tree city seriously, and really want to, uh, advocate on behalf of, um, both homeowners' rights and, uh, uh, being a tree city, uh, going forward.
Very good, it sounds like a great, uh, I, I, I like where you guys are going, so good luck with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sage, no?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mark, I appreciate the update. So i- in your discussions with regards to, uh, I guess what you guys would consider an annual tree report, if you will, a planning document. Is there further consideration to go beyond the ordinance and incorporate this into our operating procedure, even our charter, et cetera? Um, is, is the design that grand?
We, we were supposed to meet last Friday in terms of, um, uh, Nick and, and, uh, city, uh, Nick and, uh, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Kraut, we're going to get together and provide us some, here's what it is now, here's the most aggressive thing, here's a middle thing, sort of, you know, red, yellow, green kind of thing to look at it. And that was going to be the, the, sort of, the, the basis for our going forward as to what do we want to do in the different areas of, of, of the ordinance? So, uh, really at the beginning stage, stages, Councilmember Sage, in terms of that.
Thank you.
The tongue twister there.
Uh, Councilmember Keithley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, do we still have a hold on taking new requests for landmark trees until the ordinance is revised? Or are you guys taking requests as a committee right now?
Councilmember Albert?
The moratorium is still in place, to the best of my knowledge.
Councilman, uh, city manager, uh, Wing, do?
It's correct.
So, so how?
When does that end?
Yeah, when, when does that end? Do we need, how long can we keep that? Are we going to have, uh, does the tree committee think they're going to have?
Attorney, Attorney Kraut, did you happen to keep track of the date?
Uh, yeah, I was just looking for that as we're speaking, so give me, give me one minute and I'll, uh, I'll, I'll find that and I'll.
I thought we said it at, at 90 days from the.
It was, my, my, I think we have about a month.
We were in person, so we'd been home for eight weeks, so we know.
I have, I have it in front of me, I, I pulled that report. It was at our March 9th, 2020 meeting. City council adopted a 90-year moratorium, which prohibits consideration of new applicants for removal of landmark trees, so April, May, uh, we're into June 9th would be the end of the 90 days.
And, uh, the city attorney, can we extend that?
Yeah, what we'll do is, uh, after we meet next time, maybe we can get a, a good idea as to, uh, how much more time that we think that that process, because moratorium is, is just on the, uh, uh, landmark tree requests, um, so if, if we make, uh, significant progress on that, I know the, the scope of the committee has grown. But if we get progress on that, we'll get a better idea and, and we'll bring back a request to extend it if, uh, if appropriate.
And we do have a meeting scheduled for the 8th, the day before.
Okay. Very good. Okay, uh, thank you. Now we're on to new business referral miscellaneous, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yep, uh, check registers, just, uh, the first two were, uh, April 24th and May 1st. And in addition to that, uh, just a brief report, uh, on the reopening, uh, advisory committee, um, we have a meeting this upcoming Thursday. Which each of the subcommittees are going to be reporting back. We'll be posting information on the specific webpage, which is, uh, RochesterMI.org slash open. And, uh, so information is continuing to be posted there. Um, just a few other updates, the social distancing outdoors, additional signing, uh, signage has been, uh, posted in our green space areas and along the paths. Um, this new signage talks about, um, social distancing, also wearing face coverings, and, uh, um, it has some, um, web addresses, QR codes, and other things, uh, so if people have questions, it actually, somebody could just, uh, either type in the web address or scan the QR code and actually get pulled to, uh, various informational, uh, webpages. Um, the other final two items are, are, uh, recently, we've done the Mill and Phil work, um, that we were trying to wrap up during this fiscal year. Um, so, um, people may have seen, um, you know, some repaving over on Second Street and Elizabeth Street and Old Town and Water. Um, that concluded, um, last week on Friday. And finally, uh, the farmer's market has adjusted their, um, opening weekend, um, to Saturday, May 30th. It was adjusted due to the governor extending the stay-at-home order, uh, to the 28th. Um, so, um, the DDA and PSD are working on the, uh, the farmer's market, uh, for Saturday, May 30th. Um, and we'll be posting additional information to that item on both the city's website, and I know the DDA is as well, and that's all I have.
Right, I'd just, just say that the, the, uh, the two chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief and Blaine are also involved with the, um, farmer's market, working with the DDA, just to make sure that that's a safe and, you know, secure event, uh, for our citizens with social distancing and all, and all that kind of stuff. Um, Councilmember Sage and then Councilmember Salvia?
And Nancy may be going to speak to, what, go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, all right, um, we talked earlier today that, um, I, I just wanted to ask, I, I understand we moved the date of the opening of the market out to stay in line with the stay home, stay safe order. However, there are other farmer's markets opening in the state. This is food, this is essential items, um, it helps our farmers. Um, the other markets in the state, they, they are opening this weekend, but they can only, uh, for vendors selling food. So I just think that needs to be looked at in terms of a way to provide food safely for our residents. Obviously, social distancing has to be in place. Perhaps the DDA, you know, may want to have, um, masks, hand sanitizers, things like that, that they can give to people. But I really think we need to look at that, you know, if you look at the farmers, you know, right now, there's a big plea out there to help the farmers up in Traverse City because they're dumping their cherries. You know, so this is a way that we can help the local farmers as well. So I would really like to see if we could look to, um, bring on the farmer's market sooner than the end of May.
Councilmember Sage?
No, I, I, I was going to mention as well, uh, the, the, the safety precautions to have the DDA at least look at providing PPE for those people that do attend the function without a mask, et cetera, and have hand sanitizer accessible, et cetera.
They can also sell, send those, sell those love local masks. I got my two in the mail today, which will be more fundraising that the DDA could do.
Perfect idea. Mayor, I'm happy to pass along those. I know SNCOG is actually doing a, um, a farmer's market, uh, webinar, talking about the, the safety, the Michigan, uh, uh, Farmer's Market Association is going to be a part of that, and I know the DDA has already been in touch with them as well. Um, and I forwarded some information from my city managers group in regards to some of the other farmer's markets. Um, a- as they've been opening, I know our farmer's market does have other items other than food. Um, and the experience is brought more than just one person, um, usually it's kind of a family or a gathering, which, again, with the current stay-at-home order, um, is, is not recommended. It's one person going into the grocery store for the family. And so I think some of those things were the considerations, uh, to, to, to push it to after the current stay-at-home order.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua?
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned with the concept of voting on something that is going to draw people out of their homes, um, versus, you know, uh, staying in their homes as, as, uh, the order, uh, requires, so. Uh, I understand the food issue, um, but as, as, uh, as Blaine mentioned, you know, you, you start running into, it becomes not necessarily a thing of necessity, it becomes, let's get out and do something. Um, so that, that, that'd be my only concern.
Uh, Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just, I would just want to make sure that, you know, the DDA has appropriate planning time and that for whatever they do, so. I mean, that part's fine as far as the stay in place, I mean, it's, that's kind of different. There's many different, um, industries and, uh, professions that are allowed to go back to work and things like that, so I think that there's, you know, there's not any consistency there, so. I think that, um, if people are going to an outdoor venue and things like that, unable to walk, they should be able to attend a farmer's market with those, um, the social distancing that they are requiring in place. I don't think that that should hinder us, but I think that it is smart that the DDA waited till the end of the month because labor, I mean, Memorial Day comes that week earlier, so. Instead of getting in, you know, competition with that, it'd actually have more time.
Okay. Okay, now we're on to, well, now, now's the time, before we get to miscellaneous comments, I'd like to bring up the issue of the item for, um, hazard pay for our lease buyer and DPW. So, council, we need to discuss that?
Yep. Like, I'll make a motion to approve the hazard pay till, until the end of May, end of May at the stay-at-home or, or the state of emergency order.
Okay, and then at the what percentage?
At the one point, at the current, at the current rate of 1.5.
Okay. So a motion by Councilmember Peterson, is there support? Support by Councilmember Sage? Is there further discussion? Is there discussion? Councilmember Keith Lee.
Thank you. I I'd just like to add that I I feel really proud of our city for offering this. It's so important. My mother, we just celebrated Mother's Day. On Sunday, my mother's a police officer in Waterford, and I I know that. I hear from her what they're facing in the field right now, and I just feel really proud of our city and our council. For recognizing our frontline workers in this way. So I I definitely support this effort and this motion, and, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to them. For being out there and helping keep us safe during this difficult time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Excellent.
Yes.
Babacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager, and the police chiefs, you can, fire chiefs, you guys pass that on, uh. That we're very thankful for our, and the DPW uh, for our frontline workers out there, of course, so.
Thank you, council. Be happy to pass that along.
Thank you. Um, is there any comment? I saw a call out there from a, from the public. Is it still out there, Mr. Manager?
Um, she she's since texted that uh, her question was answered, so that there's, uh, she would, she disconnected.
Okay. I'm glad we answered their question. Anything from uh, Mr. Bando or the two chiefs? You guys still out there?
Yep, we're here, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Pretty dark.
Very much, we're good.
Okay.
Wake up.
Did did we pay the, pay the light bill back there at City Hall?
Hello?
Concern, conserving energy, yeah. Cutting back.
We have LED lights. Yes.
Joella, anything?
No, I've been listening and everything sounds great. Thank you.
Sounds good, Sandy.
I'm all set. Thank you, council, for approving the essential pay for our department. We appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, madam clerk.
I do have a couple of items, Your Honor. Um, first administrative administration met today um, to discuss Memorial Day plans. Um, with the stay-at-home order in place, um, through the twenty-eighth, obviously that means we can't uh, have. Our ceremony over at Mount Avon. Um, so far, uh, the um. The lawn mowing has started, uh, the spring cleanup has been taken care of, um, headstones that we've received delivery or have been installed. We will be working on um, installing the sod on the recent burials, so. And um, for Memorial Day, DPW staff will be, take a couple of days, and they will place the flags. At the veterans' graves, and then they'll remove them the following week. So. Whereas last year, that was an invited public event, that's not going to be how we handle it this year. Um, but that that task will be done because that is, that is important to do. Um, and also, there won't be a speech or ceremony on Memorial Day at the cemetery, however. The mayor working with Jane is going to tape a message with the event. That can be um, placed on the website um, for for that uh, memoriam. Also, um, with regard to elections, I want council to um, be aware that. Um, Secretary State's office right now has told us to go ahead and plan like we normally would. Um, but with the way things are going and what we've seen across the country, Jessica and I have discussed. Um, how we would pivot from normal to all absentee, so I've. Put in a plan for both ways if that becomes ne- necessary, and I just want you guys to know that um, we can pivot pretty easily that way. Um, we were able to um, do that. Uh, we did have some extra money left in the elections budget. And you know, last year I purchased a second um, tabulator for the absentee boards. Um, I've met with Blaine and he approved us buying a third one. Uh, we have about ten thousand registered voters, each one of those tabulators. And with um, accounting board attached to it can process about two thousand within the timeframe. That from seven AM to eight PM, so just with those three right now, we could profit, process up to sixty percent. Of our registered voters if they, that many voted by mail. Um, and then if it went over that, then it would uh, probably take a little bit more time, but we'll see how that goes. I I think we're in a good spot, um, much better than probably the other larger municipalities. Um, that have to buy extra supplies and or um, extra big machines to count there, so. Um, we're watching it and we'll see what happens.
Very good, thank you. Um, Anthony, you have anything?
All set, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, uh, city attorney?
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, uh, councilmember Sage.
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, sir, I have about four things. I apologize. So, one, um, want to address the city's website. I heard from some residents that it's a little confusing, um, because there's so much information on there, and it kind of moves that people are not. Able to get to the where they're looking, and also they would like it if we would uh, publish the uh, phone numbers. Um, and make them more easily accessible, especially for getting on these meetings. Um, also, um. I wanted to um, ask if we could offer to have our state and county reps uh, come join us for one of our meetings. Uh, to give us an update, uh, since it's been quite some time and there's so much going on, and I thought it would be nice to hear from them. And also, I I did receive an email, um. And I have a question regarding the community house and events that people have uh, paid to have there, um. And that they have, you know, canceled their events, but they're not receiving their money back and being refunded. So, um, I find that during this time, um, any money is collected for events that must be canceled, I believe should be. Refunded fully. I understand it's a, you know, business, et cetera, but um. In times like these, it's totally different. So if our DDA can be offering money up to help cover things and pay for things, I think that. Other entities need to give our um, give our people back their money for events that they have to cancel due to this. Um, uncertainty. Um, also, we all received an email regarding the newspaper litter again, and I thought maybe that the. City attorney could uh, speak at, about that at the next meeting, or actually address the gentleman who emailed us. Thank you all very much, and thank you to the city workers.
I would say that the newspaper litter has been a longstanding issue in this city. Which we have not been able to solve, it seems like. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Babacqua.
Uh, nothing from me, thank you very much.
Councilmember Keith Lee.
Nothing from me this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, um, thank you on the Mill and Phil, the updates there, that was great. Thank you administration for jumping right on that, and the Memorial Day acknowledgement, it's important. I think we're handling that really appropriately, that's great. Um, also, I checked on our census um, tallies and how we're doing on uh, reporting for the census. So we're at seventy-four point one percent, so a pretty good uptick. Um, but Rochester Hills is at seventy-nine point one. So we can't let Rochester Hills beat us. So I know Jane is on it, and she's really trying to work with some of the apartment communities and. Um, you know, get eh, get everyone to respond to that, serve that, the census, the date is extended to October thirty-first. So, um, I know we're all on that, but um, I just think we need to beat them.
Could could, could that be, could that number from Rochester Hills be fake news? Just, just kidding.
Don't know, don't know.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Mine's gonna be patriotic today. Tomorrow, at eleven forty-seven, the Blue Angels will be as close as they can be to Rochester. They'll be, their flight plan will take them over Beaumont Hospital about eleven forty-seven. Um, the Rochester Police put that post on the Facebook with the flight map, so. Um, get out, and if you hear those, anybody who's seen the Blue Angels, they're spectacular, so. Uh, and then secondly, um, the Royal Park Hotel has been, you know, one of our our great partners in the city, helping us with a lot of things. Few weeks ago, I did the Curb Side for a Cause Pizza Kit, which was a huge success. Um, in honor of Memorial Day, they're doing another one. Where it's called a Family Grilling Kit. You get four New York steaks, four baked potatoes. Two batches of asparagus salad and rolls for, I think it was eighty-five dollars, I bought my kit today. And money, uh, five dollars from that goes to the Yellow Ribbon Fund, which is for veterans, um, you know, who who've been disabled and. And uh, help them get into homes and things of that sort, so. So, again, you know, they've been shut down, just like our other businesses, and yet even being shut down, they've been doing things to help uh, causes, um, um, and I just. My pizzas were great. I hope my New York strips are as good, uh, but I, you know, uh, just want to let the public know that's that's out there, it's on Facebook, and. Hopefully, we can help them help others.
Very good, thank you. And I'll just, I'll just end also on a on a positive note. Par Pharmaceutical, you know, is is our our largest employer. And they have a number of drugs that are being used in the fight against uh. COVID nineteen, and so they are working around the clock. To do that, and uh, I think their staff is, you know, really motivated to come to work to do that, because they have a lot of drugs that are, you know, right on the front line. So congratulations to them, and also, um, they are a, been an excellent community partner. They bought, I wrote, five thousand dollars worth of sandwiches from Main Street Deli. Um, so they're also contribu- contributing, and Main Street Jelly went as far as to show up at two o'clock in the morning. Uh, to deliver to the third shift, so it's really a sign that our community, everybody working together. Um, in these difficult times, and. You know, Par is proud of what they're doing, and, you know, Main Street Deli was proud to help them, so, I mean, it's all, it's all good, all working together in this difficult time. Trying to support each other, so that's what makes Rochester great. So, without further ado, that's all we have. I appreciate everybody coming. Thank you, Jane, for always your help setting up these meetings and things. And. We will see you next time, everybody.
Thank you.
Man, meeting is a journey. Good night. You guys, thank you.
Good night.